Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Cheryl, would you do the role call, please?
Mayor Newton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoffman. Councilmembers Grunmeyer.
Here.
Hannah Bash.
Yes.
Chair Leonard.
Here.
The vice chair, Wriggler, is absent. Commission members Azavito.
Here.
Hedges.
Here.
Jafarian.
Here.
Thank you. Now I have the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Protem Hem.
As the allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to open with a discussion item on accessory building application and review process. If any of the members of the audience would like to comment afterwards, if you would fill out a card and please give it to the clerk. Steve, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to forget how to turn this on. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
If I could make one small comment before Steve goes into his presentation.
Absolutely.
And that is, I want to let everybody know that what we have tonight is a forward-looking document. So there were issues identified with our current process regarding accessory procedures for evaluating the applications and reviewing and approving those. Throughout the presentation, you're going to see us refer to current practices. And that is so that we can identify what those current practices are that have created us problems. And then you will see following that, recommended actions. And again, I would encourage every one of you to look at this as a forward-looking document. What we're trying to do is identify what the best practices should be going forward. And so I'd like to encourage anyone to look at this presentation from that viewpoint.
And I'll make one additional comment as well. Remember, this is a study session. There's no decisions to be made. There will be two public hearings. While you can obviously want to understand what the recommendation of the ad hoc committee is, it is what it is tonight, and that's what will go to the planning commission. So it's really, truly a study session, so that you understand what's going to be before you, not to propose changes to it or to take testimony, even though obviously the public has the opportunity to comment. Their comments are not, would not be part of the public record for the purposes of the public hearings, either before the planning commission or the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, I figured it out, I think. There we go. Okay, I'll skip the background. Basically, the city council on September 7th, they established an ad hoc committee to look at accessory buildings, lot coverage, and basically the processing of how accessory buildings are reviewed for presentation to the planning commission. The ad hoc committee consisted of two councilmembers and two planning commissioners and staff. And then I'll just read the objective, "To review the criteria and process for evaluating and approving accessory buildings and provide recommendations for improvements." All right, I don't know what to, okay. The concerns, and the reason why the ad hoc committee was appointed or established, was that there was a proliferation of large accessory buildings within the community and the massing of those buildings themselves in reference to the lots and to adjoining properties and to the neighborhood. The concern was the lot coverage requirements, that they weren't, as contained in the code, weren't establishing enough criteria for limiting the size of accessory buildings. Additional concerns were preservation of animal-keeping area going into the future, lack of objective criteria for conducting the impact analysis on adjacent properties and neighborhoods, the lack of follow-up procedures to ensure that conditions of approval were being observed, and then the architecture of the buildings, not enough was being done to ensure that the design of them integrated with the design of the primary dwelling and surrounding properties. Okay, so what I'll do now is go through the overview of the recommendations that the ad hoc committee came through. I will say that after the city council appointed the ad hoc committee, we had a series of eight meetings through which we broke it down into five categories of how they would be reviewed, and basically based upon the issues that we just discussed. So through those meetings, the recommendations that the ad hoc committee came up with were to create a list of non-discretionary requirements that all accessory buildings would have to meet, provide other information for the planning commission in its discretionary review, which we'll go over more later in the presentation. And then in the five categories that they decided to address, they ultimately determined that all of the accessory buildings could be adequately categorized into three different categories based upon the criteria needed for those types of buildings. The first being the large recreational and agricultural vehicle parking buildings, animal-keeping shelters for large animals, and then everything else would fall under the other accessory building category. So the issues, the issues that, and the recommendations to address those issues are as follows. In terms of massing, the way the process is done currently is that the massing of buildings is regulated through setback requirements, heights of buildings, and then lot coverage restrictions. The maximum, one of the issues with that is the maximum height of a building is currently allowed to be 20 feet, and there is no restriction from the height, from that height being at the minimum five-foot setback requirement. And the implementation of these practices has resulted in some large accessory buildings that are five feet away from property lines. So what the ad hoc committee has recommended is that they're being implemented, or that there be a graduated setback requirement, and I'll show you an exhibit right after this slide here to show you how that would work. All the setback requirements for any accessory building would be based from a starting point of an eight-foot eve height for a building at the minimum five-foot setback requirement. And then the ad hoc committee also recommended that there be actual limits on the size of the accessory buildings, rather than trying to address it just through lot coverage, and then reduce the maximum allowed height of the accessory buildings. So the exhibit, and this would be included in the Norca Municipal Code, and it basically is based upon a concept where, starting at the starting point of an eight-foot eve height at the minimum setback requirement of five feet, which... Oh, there it is. I shake too much, sorry. Basically, it's at the top left corner of that graph you have up there, the blue part of it. So as the height of the building increases above eight feet, the setback requirement for that portion of the building increases one and a half feet. So the arrow points to what is being recommended as a revised new height limit of 18 feet on the tallest buildings. And if you follow that arrow over, the minimum setback requirement for that portion of the building would be at 20 feet. For, and we'll go over RV buildings in a minute, but the eve height for an RV building would be 14 feet. Now that would not be allowed, based upon this graph, would not be allowed to be right at the five-foot setback requirement. It'd have to scoot back until it basically bisected with the blue portion of that graph, whatever setback, and it ends up to be 14 feet, which makes it sound like a one-to-one, but it's not. So again, for every one foot of increase in height, there's a one and a half foot increase in the setback requirement. The other issue that was brought up, this is the, so massing was the first category that the ad hoc committee decided to address. The second was the CUP process. The current procedure is that for any building over 864 square feet is required to get a conditional use permit. The problem with it is that the procedures that are established in the code and the application themselves are all based more on commercial uses in commercial zones and more intensive residential and agricultural uses in residential and agricultural zones. And the problem that the ad hoc committee identified is that the findings that are listed in the Norca Municipal Code are not very specific and applicable to accessory buildings, which are considered part of a residential and agricultural use of a property. So what the ad hoc committee determined to recommend is a creation of a new application for each of the three types of accessory buildings that we just spoke about. The large recreational agricultural vehicle building, the animal shelter for large animals, and then every other category. And then a new section of the code would be added that would address specifically accessory buildings and would establish findings that are applicable to accessory buildings only. And attached to, we don't have it in the slideshow, but attached to your staff report is the draft code section that's being recommended to be added to the Norca Municipal Code. And the third issue that the ad hoc committee wanted to address was lot coverage. Currently, the way, the size of accessory buildings are controlled by the coverage of the flat portion of a lot, which is that portion which is 4% greater or less. However, as we've seen in the implementation of that process, it's not an effective way to control the size of accessory buildings. So what the ad hoc committee has recommended, that there be a maximum size on each of the categories of accessory buildings, and the interventions for those individual categories that are listed there again. So for a large recreational agricultural vehicle building, these would be the ones that need to be taller because of the height of the vehicle. It's being recommended that the maximum size of the building be limited to 1,000 square feet, and that the maximum height of the building at roof eve be 14 feet, with the maximum height of the building being limited to 18 feet. And then after discussion, the ad hoc committee determined that, in addition to the RV building, there could be an allowance for an additional 400 square feet of accessory building for other uses, like a hobby shop, but that building would be limited in height to only eight feet at the eve, and then a maximum building height of 14 feet. And again, it would only be 400 square feet. So what that looks like is something like this. We have kind of a building in basically two portions. And then right directly below is a site plan of that building. So the portion on the right that's taller would be for the parking of the RV vehicle. And then the portion on the left is the additional 400 square feet that could be allowed at the reduced height. Okay, for animal-keeping shelters for large animals, the maximum height at the roof eve would be 10 feet. There wouldn't be a limit on the maximum height. And then the size of the building is determined based upon the number of animal units allowed on the lot multiplied by 225 square feet, plus an additional 225 square feet for every five animal units to allow for tack and feed storage. And a picture of how that would work is as such. So the, this is a, this is for a typical half-acre lot in Norca where five animal units would be allowed. The maximum size of the building is 1,350 square feet, based upon 225 square feet per animal unit. And what that translates into is, in this exhibit here, you have 168 square feet for each stall, and then an additional 168 square feet for the tack and hay storage, and then a breezeway of 342 square feet. So each of the stalls themselves are not 225 square feet, because it makes accommodation for the breezeway. So for all other accessory buildings, the maximum height at the roof eve is eight feet, being recommended, and then the, at the roof eve, eight feet, and then the maximum height of the building itself would be 14 feet, and then the maximum size allowed would be 864 square feet. And this basically is just half of the first exhibit that we looked at, where part of the building was taller for an RV storage. This is shown as a garage, but this could as well be a building with doors and windows if it's not proposed to be a detached garage, like a hobby shop or something like that. But again, the maximum size is 876 square feet, the maximum height at the roof eve is eight feet, and the maximum height for the building itself is 14 feet. The other, another issue that the ad hoc committee wanted to address in its review was preservation, basically of open areas, to make sure that in perpetuity there would be enough room on lots for future owners that wanted to keep animals on those lots. And the current procedure right now is that when someone applies for an accessory building, they have to first demonstrate an open area that's equal to 576 square feet multiplied by the allowed number of animal units on that lot. One of the, one of the issues that we've run into is that there is no restriction on applicants being able to use those, to show those areas also as access areas to the accessory buildings. And then another issue that's come up is that when you place the open animal area directly against property lines, and the owner wants to put in fencing to keep the animals away from property lines, it's a de facto restriction of that open animal area. So what the ad hoc committee is recommending, that the access to the accessory building cannot cross the open animal area, and that there be a required five-foot buffer around the open animal area to property lines and buildings. And then the last issue, this is the last of five that the ad hoc committee determined needed to be addressed, was architecture. The way it's currently done, the proposed accessory building is reviewed by the architectural review committee, which is two members of the planning commission. What the ad hoc committee determined is that the current procedure is not enough, because it's basically, it's basically become a match of colors to the primary residence, as opposed to incorporating more of the materials from the actual residence itself. And so what the ad hoc committee is recommending is that there be articulation, either for decorative purposes on the non-animal-keeping accessory buildings, or for utility purposes on the animal-keeping buildings, that's needed for ventilation and that sort of thing. So the purpose being to break up the long faces of buildings with some sort of articulation. And that the, this would be a requirement in the Norca Municipal Code, basically a non-discretionary requirement, that the accessory building would have to incorporate not just color, but also materials and style of the primary dwelling. So what the, after the five categories, let me back up here. After the five categories, what the planning committee, sorry, the ad hoc committee determined to do was to come up with a list of non-discretionary requirements for each of the proposed accessory buildings. And then in addition to the non-discretionary requirements, there would be a list of other information that the planning commission would need in order to do its discretionary review, and we'll go over those here shortly, coming up right now. And then in addition to all this, the planning commission added two requirements. These are, again, non-discretionary requirements that are contained in the section that would be added to the Norca Municipal Code. One, that the approved site plan and conditions of approval would be recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit, and that there is a condition required that all accessory buildings are subject to inspection by city staff, to ensure that what's being done with the building is consistent with the permit that got approved. So with that, we'll talk briefly about the non-discretionary requirements. What we've done is listed all of the non-discretionary requirements that are both listed in the draft section of the Norca Municipal Code, and are part of the application that would be given to the applicants. And this first list of non-discretionary requirements for large recreational agricultural vehicles, I'll just read them quickly. They're a lot the same for each of them, but there are minor variations. So this is for the large vehicles for recreational agricultural purposes. Again, maximum height, 14 feet at the roof eve, with a pitch of the roof that matches or is less than the primary dwelling, and then the maximum height being limited to 18 feet. Actually, we need to take off that last portion of that sentence, or the highest point of the primary dwelling. It would just be 18 feet maximum. Again, the maximum allowed size is 1,000 square feet. The lot coverage is not being recommended to be changed, and currently, right now, it's 40% of the flat pad area. All of the, all portions of the accessory building would be subject to the graduated setback requirement exhibit that we looked at. That includes the 14-foot side at the maximum height at the roof eve. That could not be located at five feet, which is our typical setback requirement. It'd have to be setback further away from that minimum five feet. No washroom or restroom is allowed, only a one basin sink. The side of a, oh, this is the side of the building that we, that I spoke about already that requires articulation for any side of a building that exceeds 20 feet in length. No interior wall separations are allowed. The wall finishes on the exterior have to match the material style and colors of the primary dwelling, and then the five-foot buffer area around the open animal area that is still required. So if we go to now the animal-keeping shelters for large animals, this is the non-discretionary requirement, meaning that this is information, or this is the criteria that all buildings have to meet before they can even be presented to the planning commission for its review. The maximum height at the roof eve is 10 feet. There is no maximum height. And then the maximum size, again, being equal to 225 square feet multiplied by the number of allowed animal units, excuse me, and then an additional 225 square feet for tack and feed storage. Again, the maximum lot coverage does not change. There is a washroom allowed in an animal-keeping shelter that is no more than toilet and a one basin sink. Again, the side of the length of the building has to be articulated, no, the only interior, excuse me, excuse me. The only interior wall separations are for stables or the stalls. The no roll-up garage doors be allowed, open ventilation areas, and then all electrical outlets have to be, cannot be located on walls of stall areas where animals would be, proposed to be kept. They could only be in the breezeway or parts of the building that aren't intended for animal keeping. Then all other accessory buildings, the, okay, it says maximum height at roof eve is 10 feet. That's not true. It's eight feet at the roof eve. And then the maximum height of the building is 14 feet. The maximum size of the building is 864 square feet, or one-third the size, the square footage of the primary dwelling. So you could go up to 864 square feet, provided that your primary dwelling is at least three times that size. If it's smaller, then the building is limited to one-third the square footage of that primary dwelling. Lot coverage stays the same. The graduated setback requirement is applicable. No washroom or restroom is allowed, only a one basin sink. Again, the articulation of sites that exceed 20 feet. And then no interior wall separations are allowed. The wall finishes have to match the house, and then the five-foot buffer area around the open animal area. Lastly, I think, this is the additional information that is required on each of the applications so that the planning commission can adequately perform its review on each of the proposed accessory buildings. These are not, these are not static requirements as the non-discretionary requirements are, because there's some flexibility for review by the planning commission in the determination of these issues. What we've done is we've attached just one of the list of non-discretionary, or the discretionary information that's needed, because it's primarily the same information on each of the applications. Starts off with all of the lot, existing lot criteria, the size of the property, how much of the lot is going to be covered, how much of the flat pad area is going to be covered with all of the existing buildings, the pools and coping areas around the pools, and then the proposed buildings. It asks what are the proposed uses of the building, the size of the proposed building, the height of the proposed building, the floor plan, just to make sure that it's understood by the applicants that for non-animal-keeping buildings, there are no interior wall separations. Then we get down into items where we start looking at, not star, but continue looking at potential impacts to adjoining properties. How much grading is being proposed in terms of cubic yards? Are they going to cut into slopes? Are they going to fill onto the property to create pad areas for the building? And then what kind of impact this is going to have to adjoining properties? Are they going to change the flow of runoff as it goes from its existing condition? And that's either by increasing the amount of flow or redirecting the flow into a different area. And this part of the application will more than likely require a study by the engineering division to make sure that what's being proposed is not going to do, have any of these kinds of impacts to adjoining properties. Okay, and then questions, and a lot of, you'll notice that a lot of these questions are kind of repetitive as to what's required in the code, and that's intentional, so that applicants, when they're looking at the application, they will know going in that this is information that the planning commission's going to look at in its discretionary review. And if they don't meet these criteria, one, they won't even get to go to planning commission. But we want to list them in the application so that's clear to the applicant what is being asked of them in terms of what they're submitting for review to the planning commission. Again, the architecture, the non-discretionary requirement for architecture- Again, the architecture, the non-discretionary requirement for architecture is that they have to incorporate style, materials, and colors of the building. And then, the planning commission, in its discretionary review, will determine whether or not they've gone far enough to meet that requirement. And then, lastly, is a, and what the impact of a proposed building is going to have on the view from adjoining properties. And this will be supplemented with a requirement in the application that the Afghan has to provide the views looking out from their property out to adjoining properties. And then, they have to identify what impacts from their neighbors are going to be impacted by their proposed building. And then, this would all be verified by staff, in their staff visit and analysis of the project. So, I think that's it. So I'll conclude my presentation and open it up for answers, questions, answers, and discussion.
Thank you, Steve. What I'd like to do is kind of follow first by the numbers, massing CUP process, lot coverage, preservation, architecture. And I'll turn this over to Chairman Leonard for questions of the planning commission first, or any discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Phil?
I don't have any questions. I just want to make it clear that the committee really appreciates the effort that the staff put together. I think they've captured the essence of what we want to talk about. And we had quite a bit of dialogue with audience at the time. And I think we got most of that covered into what really should be a pretty clear document as it goes forward.
Danny?
No.
Pat? Just, I'm wondering if Steve could give us the information regarding the animal keeping building, because I know it, even when we were going over it, it's a little confusing. This is not a building. Can you describe what the building is for, Steve, as opposed to our animal keeping on the lots?
Yes. And basically, what it is, it's a, I'll start with the size of the building. And this is taken from a study that was done by UC Davis, pretty much based upon horses. But the size of the building is based upon 225 square feet, which that study determined is the minimum area needed to keep a horse that's basically in a confined condition. It doesn't mean that there has to be 225 square feet within the structure itself for the horse, but the, but the structure can accommodate such things as breezeways and that sort of thing. So what they did is they determined what that maximum size would be. Now, the difference between an animal keeping structure as opposed to the other two categories of accessory buildings is that, one, the, there's a lot of ventilation, either at the top of the walls or windows along the sides of the walls. There can be no electrical facilities in any of the areas where the, where the animals would actually be kept in an overnight condition, so to say, so to speak. And they'd have to, any electrical facilities, like a wall socket or something like that, would have to be within the breezeway. And then, lights could hang no lower than 10 feet from the bottom of the floor up to where they-
Okay. That is good, but I guess what I'm trying to make sure that everybody's clear is, this is not to take the place of your animal stalls outside. This is just for night housing. This is in addition to it, so it doesn't take the place. So everybody's clear about that. Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah. And I don't know if this would be something we've been bringing up now or later, but where we talk about the allowance of eve height, my kind of fear possibly would be is, when people talk about eve heights, Steve, you know, is it the eve height at the wall? Or being, I know you're shaking, but do you, I mean, kind of what I'm, you know, because an eve is an overhang.
Right.
So some people may look at it as the end of the overhang, which could be, you know, four and a half, five foot, five and 12 roof pitch, which would then bring that wall up to like higher than that. So I'm just wondering, you know, that's why I'm asking, are we talking about the height of the wall, or are we talking about the end of the eve?
And that's a good point. And we probably need to add a definition so that it's clear to the applicant. It is the height of the wall where it meets the eve of the roof.
Well, yeah, then it'd be just the height of the wall. But yeah, I'm just worried, like I said, if you go four and a half and 12 roof pitch and put a 24-inch overhang on it, then you've got, you're adding, you could be adding an extra foot, or, I mean, Phil is the mathematical genius on that one, but you'd be adding a, you know, a foot or foot and a half on that wall. So it would be, so it'd be pretty much where we're talking about the height of the wall.
Okay, that was it. Thank you, Steve. Turn this back over to the mayor.
You clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I know that we talked about this on here. You still have that 524 square feet?
Yeah.
You gotta correct that.
Okay. Yeah.
It should be 576.
That's actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to point that out and forgot. It's actually repeated in the applications that are attached, and it actually was repeated in the slide presentation, but it is 576 square feet.
You know, being on this committee, I've learned a lot. On your, on the non-discretionary requirements for large buildings, correct me if I'm wrong, maximum height was going to be 14, you got it down at 14 at roof eve? I thought we were going to do 16. To accommodate for the doors.
I mean, we could change it, but-
I know, I'm just, I'm just thinking, that's what I thought we, but we'll go through there.
My recollection was that it was kept at 14 because the pitch-
The door.
Would allow for the roll-up portion of the door.
Okay, we'll have to-
But we can change-
We can look at that, and we'll bring that back up. And then, I noticed on your coverage, and we talked about a washroom, restroom for the stalls, it was essentially going to be in commercial stables more. Anybody in the ad hoc committee can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
And then, on we, and this only because we're dealing with this mess here, over the last couple of weeks. One of the things that we talked about in building and grading and the runoff problem is, we do have properties in here, in the city, that are in floodplains. Can that be added into your, in your discretionary questionnaire? Is the property located in a floodplain?
Yeah.
So that gives the planning commission a little bit better, at least they can answer that and make their decision on those.
Okay.
And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
So do we ask questions now, or do we wait?
Yeah, it's an open discussion.
Okay. You guys did a nice job. I like the stuff, but I have lots of questions. You know, having gone through this in 2010, and I have to step back a little bit, and as I look at some of the things you've covered, we covered them then. And what's happened is the process somehow fell apart. It's ironic that one of the questions that I had asked then was, essentially, I asked Steve, I said, "I'm a little concerned, there's not enough guidelines." So I'm really happy to see that there's guidelines. So I'll begin just, these are really just process questions, things that I really want to know. First off, and maybe this is a question for John, in a CUP, who is being protected by the CUP? Is it the person who is already under the municipal code, or is it the person of the CUP? Because what was happening is a lot of these things went through, and they were, they were actually approved by the planning department. And then, it's sort of like, all of a sudden, the right became 20 feet. So who is supposed to be protected by a CUP?
Well, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not exactly sure that the correct word is protection.
Okay.
But the purpose of a conditional use permit, obviously, is that permitted use means that you can do it without considering what impacts there might be, both on the property that the use is being placed and on adjacent properties. So that, so that's why it's called a conditional use permit. It's permitted, but subject to conditions which are able to mitigate against the potential impacts. And that's why, and all conditional use permits, not particularly about accessory buildings before this changes, that there's a requirement that you make factual findings as to those four areas. That there, as we discussed, I think, in the last council meeting, as a practical matter, there are only a couple that are impactful on the accessory building issues, because as Steve indicated, that most conditional use permits were drafted, excuse me, the regulations for most conditional use permits in the process was originally drafted with the interface between commercial buildings as opposed to residential, because it just was normally not an issue. So I'm not sure that answers precisely your question, but-
Well, I just want to, I just want to make sure that people understand where we are with that. So basically, I mean, is it a right? You said it's not a right that they can do it, so obviously, you have to do the impact study to find out what the impacts are. And so, that's the next question. Are we going to have a really set criteria, times, dates, when things are done, people talk to, what things were looked at, so that we actually look to see what impacts actually apply? As opposed to incorrectly putting 813 and 814 against a CUP? That I kind of, I really want to have a system where whoever goes out there really checks what those impacts are. Are we going to do that? Have we discussed that at a level?
Yes. I'm probably not the one that's, although I attended all the ad hoc committees, but yes, that's the intention.
So by the time we sign off on this, we'll have that list and that checklist, and we'll see how it's going to work. One of the things that always concerns me, and I'm glad to hear you're going to have the checklist, is when we don't do our due diligence, the people that suffer are the residents. How many times I've heard a staffer say, "Well, that's a civil matter." And yet, I'll know the history of it, and I will know that our engineering department may be signed off on something. What people don't understand is, once we sign off, you get to go to court. And all you need is $25,000 to $50,000 to fight your neighbor. And I can think of a bunch right now. So that's why I'm going to take a little bit of time. I want to really get this right.
And, you know, in that regard, not the litigation part, but one of the things that this process really has to encourage is, and I know it's sometimes difficult, but neighbors, the ones that are quote "affected," stepping forward and saying, "Here's what I believe the effects are going to be." Because while staff can do it to some extent, they don't live there. They don't know what goes on on a day-to-day basis. And so, there has to be some way of encouraging the adjacent properties to make comments. Granted, occasionally in Norco, that neighbors-to-neighbors can become a problem. But even if it's staff going to the adjacent properties on essentially confidential basis and obtaining legitimate concerns of the neighbors, that has to be done. Neighbors have to be a part of the process.
Yeah, I think that's really good, because I talked to a lot of neighbors this week, and they're afraid of their neighbors. And they feel that they've sent letters to the planning department and gotten no response. So that's glad, I'm hoping we're going to put that into it. Application. And so, how will we ensure the accountability? Do you mention that you're going to have, you're going to inspect, or what will you inspect for? Or how will that work? Yearly, six months, two years? Do we have a plan in place for that?
The, the ad hoc committee didn't come up with how often it needs to occur, or whether it should be just done on a need-related basis. So that's kind of open for discussion. Right now, it hasn't been determined that it needs to be an annual inspection, but that certainly can be added as a condition of approval.
Yeah, I really would like to see that included in that, because you are getting a special, other cities look at a CUP as a way to protect the neighbors. And we don't look at it that way, apparently. I would prefer we did, but just in case, I think that, especially with that, and what's happening with a lot of real estate agents, is what I'm being told, is that the Norco, we fought very hard for these large lots, and you have a lot of people that want to put these gigantic buildings here. So as animals go away, Orange Park Acres, what happens is eventually, they take over your city. And the reason you move back to Norco is because of the large lots, but then they go away. Termin impacts, the application, I'm concerned, one of the things that's been told to me by planning commissioners is that the application would be received, it was considered too difficult really for the applicant, and so they would kind of fix things later. How will the applications be received now? Will they be, some of the applications, I mean, I looked at a bunch of them, and they really didn't answer the questions. And so, I want to know that when that application comes in, that the owner or the person that's making the proposal absolutely understands it, and then they have to adhere to it. And how are we going to ensure that they do correctly fill out the application?
The, what's in the application form is what we went through previously, is each of the different categories has a list of the non-discretionary requirements that, and there's a, there's a note on the application that says, "You have to provide this minimally before you can even be considered by the planning commission." And in addition to the non-discretionary requirement, is the list of information that we reviewed at the end of the presentation, whereby they have to provide additional information with regards to view impact, architecture, drainage, grading, and that sort of thing. And all of this will be verified by inspections, by staff, before it goes to-
So unpaid? Or are they paid at that point? In other words, when they make the application, how does that work? Do they pay? They take the chance that the inspection will find that there's problems? Is that how it will work?
What will happen is, the applica, we haven't established what an application fee would be at this point. The assumption will be that the cost of the application will cover at least an initial investigation by the engineering division. And in that investigation, if they determine that they need more information, and for instance, in terms of drainage and grading, then at the expense of the applicant, they have to provide that additional information before it goes to planning commission.
And it's possible that you may find that their answers aren't correct?
Yes. And then, they have to correct them.
And we'll make sure in the application that that's something that we do. Now, the site plan. The site plan review, it's pretty clear, and you know, actually, when you look at 1845, there's, it's pretty clear. I mean, truthfully, in 2010, we actually did a very good job. But a site plan review, it requires a whole bunch of things. And what has happened up to this point is, somebody will turn in a drawing, it'll have maybe some of the measurements, maybe none. It may be to scale, it may not be to scale. But I look, as you know, I looked at a whole bunch of these. And what they tend to do is, they turn in a building that actually says not to scale. I mean, I love when people argue, "Oh, it's to scale." Well, you got a building here that says not to scale. You got a bunch of windows on the side that covers more than 40 percent. My question is, per our municipal code, that is what is approved. And so, I understand from planning commissioners, there's times when they've questioned this. And so, what happens is, is that you're actually approving a building that isn't the building that everybody thinks are approving. It's just sort of like, well, we're just going to put this up here, and we'll give you the real building later. So by the time Javier goes out, you have a problem in that, what does he base it on? Because what he's supposed to do is come into your office, he talks about your office, has to go and look at the building. But if he's looking at the wrong building, which isn't even the square footage size, it's just something they get from a company that says not to scale, how do we combat that? And how do we make it so that Javier actually looks at the building was actually approved? You've got a few buildings, they're many more square feet than what planning actually approved and subsequently we approved. How are we going to, and really, the application is supposed to be, what planning approves is what is built, which gives you the other question. Let's say somebody brought a building from some commercial company, and they suddenly say, "Well, you approved this building." It's 3,000 square feet, just for an example. What do you do then? What if they say, "Well, this is what you approved"? And of course, they're responsible for accuracy. So how are we going to make sure that what is approved is actually, which means in the application process, they actually have to tell us what building it's going to be? Do you understand what my question is?
Yeah. And that'll all be verified in the site inspection by staff. So even if they give us a picture that's a mass-produced picture by a, an accessory building company, it still has to be sized and scaled on the site plan. And if they don't have that information correctly, which will be verified by site inspection by staff, then it won't go forward to the planning commission.
But if it's stamped not to scale? Does it stop it right then?
Yeah. If it's not to scale, it's not to scale.
The irony is, in all of my look that, I only found one, and it's 2,400 square feet, 21 feet high, and it sits behind- feet high, and it sits behind a 600-square-foot building built in 1923. But what's weird is, we went back, going back. I hope we can stop that kind of stuff. I like all the setback things. I'm sorry, guys, I just have a few more questions. You already answered my question about the, how do you know, date inspected, all that stuff. You covered that nicely. Thank you. Minor site plan. What is that? It's one of the things we talked about back in 2010. There's no definition, and there's no use of the word minor site plan in our municipal code. What does it mean? And can we, can we get that definition in our municipal code?
Excuse me. The definition, it's not really a definition by the code. It's a category that allows us to, and it's in our fee schedule, allows us to charge a lesser fee than a typical site plan for a commercial development would. And it was developed to keep the cost down for residential applications for accessory buildings.
Can we maybe put something to the effect that it does, even though I like the idea that it's cheaper, can we put something in it that it doesn't mean that it's a lesser inspection, that you still go through the same site plan review, as is really cleared out, clearly defined in site plan review? Who will check? You've already done that. One of the things that you keep talking about, and again, I went back through all the minutes, I can find nowhere in 1845 where all of a sudden, these are commercial buildings, and so certain things don't apply. I don't remember that. Again, I've got minutes where I specifically asked you that, are we covered? And then suddenly, I find out that the application that we're utilizing really isn't applicable. I don't want that to happen again. I know absolutely that this commercial thing is crazy. I don't even know really what you're talking about. Let's just make sure we don't do that one again. The architectural review. One of the things that also bothers me is that, and it's a question really, discretionary and nondiscretionary. My understanding is that the architectural review, which the things in it are three pages, and it says shall. Shall means you will. So, the massing and all the things that you're bringing up now are already in our code. And so, I don't understand, and no offense to anybody, why nobody looked at this. You're already not allowed to have buildings that go straight. You're already not allowed, there's a whole bunch of things in here that are encouraged, and especially when a CUP happens, these all kick in. And so, it's upsetting, because I just hope that now we know, and that all of us go, "It's all right here. These are all the protections." And then it also goes to the site plan. There's a whole bunch of rules, as you referred to, that, you know, just weren't followed. And I'm really hoping that if we keep these, are we keeping these, or what's going to happen with these? Are these going to be nondiscretionary, discretionary, the architectural? These are the rules. What's going to happen with these?
I can't see what you're holding up.
Yeah, what I'm holding up is, this is the, this is, I mean, restricted and prohibitive materials. It talks about building forms and massing. This is the building architecture. Shall reflect a desired Western theme and identity. Did nobody read that? Qualities that reflect the Western theme can be described as rural, informal, traditional, rustic, low-profile, and equestrian-oriented. Conversely, qualities, and that comes right out of 18.45. It says, "You shall follow these rules to the best of your ability." So, I want to make sure that going forward, this will get followed unless we're going to throw it out, then we'll talk about it. Okay?
Yeah. I think to the extent that you want to incorporate any of those rules, which really weren't drafted specifically for accessory buildings, that they need to be incorporated in the accessory building, nondiscretionary.
Well, the thing is, John, is that when you look at the accessory buildings, it says, "You shall go to..."
No, I know. I'm talking about on a go-forward basis.
I just want to make sure. I really like the checklist. I think it's great. I really like the direction that we're going. I think that, I think that it's going to be very, very helpful to the neighborhoods. My primary concern is another council seven years from now having amnesia again, or being confused. And it can happen. I mean, and if you recall at that meeting, dozens of people stood up in support of the ordinance. And I feel like we betrayed them. And so, I really encourage us to make sure that we dot all the i's, I mean, the devils in the details. But again, to the planning people, I'm just, I'm pretty happy with what you've come up And there's some other things, too, that I could talk about, but I think I've touched on all of them. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, on the additional requirements as far as impact studies that are going to be conducted, site reviews, those type of things, has your department talked about, number one, are you going to need an increase in staff? How is that going to impact staff time and those types of issues? And who's going to enforce it, and how it's going to be done?
We only, we only glanced at that issue. I don't know that, you know, and I'm speaking for another division, because it usually ends up being engineering that would, for instance, look at drainage studies and grading. I don't think it's going to impact our current staffing level to the point that we need more staff to do it. But it will take more staff time, there's no doubt about it. Now, that doesn't mean that every application is going to require that extensive of a review by the engineering division, but some will. And it's, I, you know, I can't speak for them, but I think they can fold it into their current staffing.
Okay. My next question would be, what do you think the impact would be on the residents as far as the timeline of getting projects approved and through the process, assuming that they meet all the requirements? Is this going to be an extension of the timeframe for projects?
No, it actually will end up taking less time, probably, generally. There are going to be specific situations where it will require more time because of the additional studies that the applicant will have to provide. And that usually is going to be for drainage and grading. But no, I think this will speed the process up.
I appreciate that the minimum requirements are on the forms, and I think the check sheet is very clear and concise. One recommendation maybe would be, if you mark no, you're kind of out of the game. And I don't think that's super specific as far as looking through the application, that if you mark no, that is a limitation or a reason for denial. And the other thing that I appreciated that you put on the forms was that it is discretionary and not, you know, a right. So, I do appreciate that. I think this is a lot more clear to the residents and those applicants about what our expectations are, and what we're looking for when they're turning in paperwork. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll thank the ad hoc committee for putting this together. It's pretty good. There's a couple of questions. The first one is Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman talking about the washroom and restroom. Did I understand you to say that's only in a commercial stable of private residence can't have a restroom out in their barn?
Yeah, the, and ad hoc committee member Hoffman is right. When we talked, and the only, the way it's currently written, the only accessory building that could have a separate washroom in it would be for animal keeping. And that discussion did come up in the ad hoc committee, that it should only be for locations where there's a commercial operation, like a boarding, stabling operation. So, that discussion did occur. The way it's written right now, it would be allowed in any of them. But ad hoc committee member Hoffman, or Councilman Rob, I'm not sure what the appropriate title He's correct. That discussion did come up.
Well, and I meant to say animal, in the animal shelter, animal keeping area like the barns, horse barns, because I know a lot of them, not just here in Norco, but other areas that I've worked in. A lot of them, the horse barn will have a washroom and a restroom in there. That way, you know, because some of them's not real close to the house, and we all know they got to be better than them little plastic portable ones outside there. But another thing that we didn't address in the animal keeping barn is a washing area for the horses. Like, I know a lot of barns that are built that will have an area in there that's the same size as a stall, 12 by 12, don't have a front on it, but it has a drain and has running water, water there. I think that probably should be addressed for people's local, local stables. And then that, the rest of it, I believe, is pretty much okay. Kevin got a lot of questions to answer that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Berwin. You know, just one sec. Berwin, so, or Steve, as long as we address that as just a wash rack, you'll be fine with that? Okay. All right. Ted, you had...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Reference the toilet in there. What we were trying to avoid was that becoming a, another living quarters out in the barn. So, we were trying to be restrictive to commercial, so it doesn't end up being somebody's extra bedroom out in the barn. And I understand what you're saying, Berwin. Something I didn't hit on earlier in my question, this, as far as the zoning, these, this new draft, this will be applicable to all zones, correct? To include Norco Ridge Ranch and the Norco Hills specific plan?
Well, what we did when we set out, and we decided early on, we had to, we had to first approach the A1 zone. And then the next step will be, my recommendation, if this gets approved, I think we reconvene the ad hoc committee and say, and look at how it's applicable then to the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan, Norco Hills specific plan, because they have a different set of rules and criteria that they go by. And it's not, it's not, it's too complicated to say that the A1 rules apply to the Norco Ridge Ranch, because their rules are different. So, that's going to be, I haven't talked to my city manager about that yet, but I think we need to do that next step.
Well, that's what I'm asking the question. Okay. Thank you.
Wondering if maybe, once this is all solidified, if maybe we could meet again as a planning and city council, and all of us make sure we're totally on the same page. We know exactly what planning's getting, exactly what they're seeing, exactly what we're going to be seeing, so that there's a lot of confusion. And I think that might be a really good step legally. You know, what was going around, as we were all told, we legally had to approve these buildings. And it was, don't ask why, but the point is, I think a meeting like that might, might be a good step in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Bob, you had a question for Steve?
Yeah, one real quick, because you were talking about the difference between a residential animal keeping area versus a commercial animal keeping. How are we going to be able to put a definition to what a, and I'm just going to say, for instance, let's say, a person's got two acres of land, and because they're own, they're allowed to have 28 horses on there, you're a crazy horse person, and you want 20 horses. Versus somebody that has two acres worth of land and decides that they're going to be a boarding facility. We know a lot of these, a lot of boarding facilities here in Norco, they have, they have nothing there. So, how are we going to be able to, somehow, we're going to need to be able to identify it, you know? Either A, they have to get approved and have a ranch license, or, you know...
A business license.
Well, yeah, but a business, but you can, again, you pull a business license, and then that means, then what criteria do we have saying that that ranch follows, you know, follows whatever criteria it is? Do we have that? Because, I mean, if you just say, "I'm going to pull, I'm going to pull a business license, and I'm going to be, you know, Joe Bob's, you know, stable." Do we have any criteria that says, "This is, this is what, you need to meet this to", do you understand what I'm saying? To have, to have a business license versus just being a crazy horse person and having 28 horses?
And unfortunately, with a business license, I mean, I guess, if theoretically you wanted to build a restroom that badly, that you could pull a billing license, say, "I'm operating as Billy Bob's Boarding Stables," and not actually do it in order to build a bathroom. And I'm not, they, we'll have, the city will annually get something in terms of sales tax, or some type of report from the state, which would indicate whether or not they're an operational business. And I guess that we end up having to face it if the business doesn't operate for two years, or goes out of business, and the bathroom's still there. Expect the city probably is not going to go out and demand that the bathroom be removed, but...
Oh, yeah. I'm just looking at trying to figure out, okay, you know, now we're just adding more criteria to it. So, what, again, to me, if we're going to do something like that, we need to, again, if this is what we're doing, we need to be able to identify what is a commercial and what is non-commercial. I mean...
The identification of it at the time of building is pretty easy, but as we've seen in Norco, what is built and how it's used the day it's built ain't necessarily the same thing five years later.
Agreed. That's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple. Steve, now, are we doing away with the self-audit that we developed?
We, this actually was never applied to the accessory buildings.
Okay.
So, there's nothing to be done away with. We're not adding it as a recommendation.
And, but with that, we always had this, I'll call it a condition of use with, you're going to, the intended use of this building, if you use it in a different manner, that building can be removed from the site.
Yeah.
Now, how will that, that condition come into play?
It, well, it, it will be a condition of approval on the building itself, and it really is going to depend on how that building gets approved, because the difference being from what we do right now, the CUP is applied only to the size of the building.
Right.
Not to the use.
Mm-hmm.
Going forward, it will not be a CUP. It's going to be the accessory building permit, subject to, that if, it will have that condition. And if you don't comply with how it was approved and the conditions of approval, that could be, that could be the result. You have to take it down.
So, we'll still have conditions of approval?
Yes.
Even though it won't be a conditional use?
Right.
And the conditions of approval are recorded?
Yes.
Right. Correct. Okay.
I mean, recorded in the, so that when you, then subsequent purchaser sees it as a matter of record what the restrictions are.
Okay. And Kevin kind of touched on this, basically with enforcement, which is a larger concern, but if I understand, the way Kevin brought it up was with the site plans and the dimensions being either not to scale, or scale, or whatever, and who verifies that? And Danny, you could maybe weigh in on this, too, is, where does our building inspector, what is his responsibility when he first goes out to the site to verify dimensions? Okay? Is that, is that a scope?
Even on grading.
Right?
Yeah, when they go up to the, up, they'll get a grading permit. You'd make sure they got that. And then they'll get a lot line certification paper, so that it's all certified where the property and the property lines are at.
I mean, my concern is, I know on my projects, it's all surveyed, but on a smaller accessory building, I could lay that out myself.
Right.
And so, then I wouldn't have the expense or the need to call out a surveyor. So, how, where does our building inspector jump in on that? As a building inspector, does he pull those lines physically?
No, we don't. No, we don't pull the lines. No, we don't pull the lines. We don't, it's just a certification.
Or verify, I should say.
We verify the paperwork that they have to present for lot lines, and where the building is laid out. And even on block walls, they'll stick them in, we'll look at the lots where they make their pegs, and see where the block wall is, if it's on the property, the property line, because you can do different measures like that. Same as the building, they'll stick it out, and we'll check that out and look and see where they're at.
So, I wanna build an 864 square foot barn, small shop, whatever, I have to get a surveyor to lay that building out?
What we've done in the past, we've not required, we've not required applicants to actually go out and hire an engineer, an architect, and surveyor, because when we originally started looking this, looking at this back in 2010, one of the issues started with the planning commission primarily, is how can we do this to get accurate information without making the applicant have to pay $10,000 in engineering costs? So, we've not required a surveyor, but Alma, she deals mostly with them, she does go out and she does measure on site to make sure that the dimensions they're showing are accurate, but she's not a surveyor.
Right. So, I think that's, I'm trying to pick up on what Kevin's saying, that these plans may say it's X amount of square feet, that we're really not verifying this. And I know Alma's not going out and looking at building corners before they dig footings or anything like that, so was that, did I read part of your concern that way, Kevin?
Well, you know, if we don't follow this, we're just kings and queens. We're just going, "Okay, you get one, and you don't get one. Okay, you get one, and you don't get one." That's what we've been doing. And it says that you go to the site plan, and in the site plan, "The site plan shall depict and contain, among other things, the following." And maybe one of the things that really needs to be looked at is, one, read this, but, two, it may be too much for, that may be where you're going, "Well, that's kinda commercial, that's not commercial." Except that, this municipal plan says, "It doesn't matter what, no offense, it doesn't matter what you think, you shall do this." And so, I think one of the things that we really need to do is, we need to decide what the site plan will be, because some of the things in this really don't apply. I mean, your site plan is supposed to have engineered draining, and you're supposed to have everything on it. Everything should be on it when you make your application.
Well, this is part of my concern with that, is that...
And that was my earlier comment, that if there are things specifically in there that need to be addressed for accessory buildings, they should be called out in the accessory building. That should be irrelevant. The only thing which should be relevant to accessory buildings are those criteria set forth in the accessory building.
And I think that's, is that where you're going to?
Yeah, because, I mean, your grading may be so minor that you don't even need engineering to look at it, other than, yeah, there's nothing there.
But then again, whose opinion is that? Because, you know, sometimes people...
Yeah, that's part of the...
Sometimes people, to get their buildings, aren't always...
And that's part of my concern, is that, who verifies that? And I'm not gonna put it on Alma to be out there, you know, with a transit and pulling dimensions, so... And at the same time, you don't wanna burden the resident on a small project to say, "You have to have it surveyed." Just kinda throwing that for discussion, is looking for some type of balance in addressing Kevin's concerns on that.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, if the person's asking for a special consideration, the burden should be on them. I mean, that also says that in the municipal code, they're supposed to be honest, they're supposed to be all kinds of things. And we just let it do that. And so, we really need to decide, I think, at some point, exactly what they're supposed to, you know, submit.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, inspectors on site, when we come on there, we aren't surveyors either.
Right.
We don't survey, well, we are collectors of, at the beginning of the paperwork, the certify, and so on there was certified for the property, if the grader was satisfied with what they called out. And that's basically it. So, like her, she couldn't go out there and look at that and say, "Certified." I totally understand that, and inspectors don't either. So, the project, that's a hardened call right there, where it's at, and how, you know, the size of the building after it's already formed up, yeah, the inspector's gonna, could look at the size of the, the size of the building, make sure it's per plans, and they should, they should do that anyway. But the actual site offset of the property line should be detailed by whoever certifies it, that he staked it out.
And I guess the question, forgive me, the question to that is, in the city of Norco, and you're an inspector, you're supposed to go to his office, and you're supposed to look at what was approved, and then you're supposed to compare that to the plan. What do you do if it says not to scale, it's the wrong building?
Oh, no, no, no. You, we don't even look at a thing unless it's already stamped, approved.
No, 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 no. The plan may say that, but because the building, in other words, we've all approved a bunch of buildings that say not to scale, and they're not the buildings that we all thought we were approving. What do you do if you go to his office?
That's the planning division, to make sure whatever's on there that was approved. What we do, it could be plans that are stamped by the planning commission, or it's not commission, planners, that they approve that building. That's what we look at. That's it.
That's my question, though, how do we make sure that two meet?
That's not an inspector's idea, being the planning.
Your permits set would be to scale.
Yeah.
But I get, that's kinda the dilemma I'm having, I think, is that, especially when you start looking at massing, that how are you gonna know that building is X amount of feet from the property line?
Mr. Mayor, a lot, as Danny, as an inspector, and as me as a builder, we, I have had, on numerous times, the inspectors go out, and if it's a five-foot setback, it's a five-foot setback. They will pull a tape and go, it's five, you know, when they, when they do the footings, they'll check, you know, here, now, they don't know if the fence line is exactly perfect, but they'll go from, you know, fence line, okay, that's at five foot. Am I gonna sit there and say, if somebody fudges a foot, are they gonna see it? No. But if you're 20 by 20, and all of a sudden, you know, inspector, like, and Daniel's saying the same thing, you see something that's not 20 by 20. An inspector will pull a tape and say, "Okay, this wall is supposed to be 20 foot, it's 28 foot." So, you know, they do do that. But, and a lot of times on, on a lot of residential stuff, you're not cutting grade. I mean, you may, you know, take a couple inches here or there off. Matter of fact, a lot of times, they take the dirt that's in the footing and put it on top, is to be able to get, mostly on garages, because you have to have the curb and everything else. So, you're really not cutting a lot of grades. So, me personally, to have somebody come out and spend thousands of dollars to have something, you know, have a site engineer shoot it, I think we're getting a little bit ridiculous on that one.
Is there, is there something that you do that's intermediate? I mean, I'm obviously not an engineer.
Well, I'm thinking that...
I mean, if the building inspector is required for accessory buildings to go out with the tape, just as a routine part of the job, and granted that it's not gonna be within inches, but you can at least verify the building size by where the footings are, and verify how far it is away from what appears to be the wall, which is a property line?
That's kinda what I'm thinking is, and it's only on residential...
Kind of no cost thing, but just needs to be directed to be done.
Right. It wouldn't be on a commercial aspect, but I think in a residential situation like this, that I think our building inspector should be able to go out there and verify the limits.
Yeah, and you talk about grading, I mean, there's a maximum amount of grading, and you can do quite a bit before you need to get an engineer on it.
Yeah.
We just raised it more. I think it's higher now.
That's all I had right now. Is there any other questions of staff or any other discussion items before we get to cards?
No. Let me point out one thing on this grading. You know, we just had an unusual rainstorm, and I tripped through some of Norco's backyards. And the interesting thing about this, and I'll go back to what Mayor Newton was talking about, was the grading and the existing drainage and runoff patterns when we put up these accessory buildings. I think they're, because of the unique, we don't have cookie cutter lots, and we have certain parts of town that are in a flood plain, that, you know, there, if we can identify, and this would be on the planning commission, and even when this application goes through, those areas that we know are prone to flood, we need to address those that don't have adequate drainage systems in there, and actually get that, because we had some serious issues this past week, with flooding and people, the water coming through, and blockage, and things like that. You know, that, so I'm looking at this, and, you know, you may say, "Well, it doesn't fit our grading requirements as far as our municipal code," but any of these buildings will affect where that water goes. And the one thing I don't wanna hear is, "It's a civil issue." And I think that we need to curtail that. If they're gonna build it, then those grading and the drainage things have to be done. And that should send up the red flag as where this thing goes, and what do you do? And so, if you're gonna have a question, I think it would be who, the planning commission, when they see that, how much, any, any grading, you gotta, those are questions that we have to specifically ask, and they should be done by, when you first get the application, and by the planning commission there, to make sure that we don't have this thing from a reoccurring. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take a short break. Five minutes enough? Okay. And then we'll start with public comments. Cheryl, do you have any cards?
Yes, I do have cards. Linda Dixon.
Hi, good evening. Hi, uh... It's up to you. There you go.
Yeah, I moved it back.
Okay.
Is that better?
Uh, you know, we went, we did go through this in 2010, and, you know, and I was part of that then, and there was some pretty, pretty good rules set forth at that time. But since 2010, they've become irreverent, irrelevant. They have not been adhered to, read, I don't know what. But with these, I need to commend the ad hoc committee, you've done a beautiful job. The issue is going to be, how are you gonna enforce it, just like it was in 2010? If you don't increase the personnel, if you just depend on self-inspections, it's gonna be the same old thing. It's not gonna work. I do believe that this document, that you're going to tweak and improve, is going to be the future of Norco. And if it's done, done right, if it's not enforced, we're gonna go by the way of your Belinda, Orange Park Acres, Nellie Gale, Villa Park, I could go on and on and on, because we've been around a lot of years. I've seen it. And they think, "Okay, one or two of these buildings, it's okay, it's not gonna bother anybody." But it does. And it does, we have the unique town. They thought they did, too. But if you don't keep up the fight and give true definition to our A120 lots, then the future of this community is doomed. There are large lots in many, many communities that don't have the restrictions and requirements ours does. However, I do have a few questions. In addition to the fact that I hope this time, all the loopholes, you take the time, go slow, and close them, make them enforceable. I'd like to know, when you, when you get a CUP, and you sell your property, and that CUP, I'm assuming, goes with the property, and that new property owner decides, "Okay, I don't want that barn. Instead, I think I'll run a business out of it, or I think I'm going to be doing something that the CUP was not intended for." How do you close that loophole? How do you let that resident know, "That's not permissible? This is something that the community has not been doing, and it's something that we really need to do and stay on top of." Our CUPs need to protect the neighbors. If I had one of these monstrosities next to me, I'd be fighting tooth and nail. I don't wanna see that. I wanna see the mountains. I wanna see the trees. I don't wanna hear the wind whipping against these metal buildings. It's okay if they're within the specs that you have outlined tonight. I don't think that would be an interference, but we have to remember what comes first in our community. And I would like to know, the staff report, I think that's been a big issue. And when you get a staff report that is not completely accurate, is there anybody that verifies these staff reports as to accuracy? I know you sign off on them, but do you sign off on the accuracy of the staff reports? Because that's all that our planning commissioners have to work on, and I don't think they've been very accurate the past few years. And I think this is something we definitely need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Betty Bash.
Cheryl, just, sorry, I was just gonna ask John to address that question on the CUP, when a property's transferred.
Yeah. One, there is, if this is adopted, there is no CUP that's applicable to these properties. That term doesn't exist anymore. And the conditions that are placed upon that use are recorded. Obviously, somebody can choose to ignore what the conditions are, and then that's our responsibility to make sure they comply. But there's no notice question. And CUPs now are not recorded.
Okay. Hi, Betty.
I, too, wanna commend the ad hoc committee for the job that you've done. Unfortunately, the same job was done in 2010, another committee, another group, meetings that people came to and voiced their concerns. We thought we had put together a pretty good municipal code. Unfortunately, I really don't believe it was broken. I don't believe that it no longer applied. I think what happened is it simply was not being used or enforced. I like the idea of the checklist. I think it definitely needs to be an evidence-based checklist, not just somebody signing off and saying, "Yes, this was done," or "That was not done." After this is done, we need to make sure that the council, the decisions that are made are based on the municipal code. This is not a system of government, a monarchy, where decisions are based on what an individual's philosophy is. That is not what this is supposed to be. We're supposed to be a democracy, and it's based on what the people themselves have asked to have, and what they want their elected officials to do. And those decisions should be impartial and based on the municipal code, not what somebody's sense of fairness is. The impacts are tremendous on other people's property. You have all of these people coming up and telling you, "If I have this accessory building, my property is gonna be worth $100,000 more." Well, unfortunately, that doesn't apply to the neighbor that has this two-story metal industrial building climbing up the side of their property. John, I'm telling you, it's very difficult to come up here, neighbors, and stand here before you, and they, when this happens, and I know from personal experience, that we are subject to ridicule, we're vilified, and neighbor wars do start, so it is not that easy. I sent all of you, I started my own personal one right with the planning commission, everybody here got a letter. I had two people in council that even acknowledged that they had even gotten the letters. I do thank both Andy and John, they both, every single time, sent me something that they acknowledged it. The sympathies seem to be with the applicants and not the people that are appealing, so I'm hoping that will be rectified. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Mike Thompson.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening, both commissions and council members. Couple of concerns about specifics. If the applicant builds an animal keeping structure, a barn, which we know is, the breezeway is possibly big enough to house an RV, and you follow all the rules, or this plan has really taken a lot of aim at the metal industrial buildings, but we... really taken a lot of aim at the metal industrial buildings, but we're going to get to, when an animal-keeping barn is built, sixteen, or say, 12 stalls and a big breezeway, hayloft, because specifically on animal-keeping structures, there's no height limit, just the wall. And that individual gets all out approved and is recorded and sells the property five years later, are we really going to go to that resident? If he's got a motorhome in the breezeway and jet skis in the, you know, in the stalls and junk and tires, like people do, are we really going to ask them to tear down that animal-keeping structure? Now, if somebody's running a business in there, there's code complaint, that's different. But it troubles me that, you know, that this could possibly be a possibility. And along with the, so keeping that in mind, an animal-keeping structure with the, you know, with the big breezeway, and then it's, I'm not real specific, it's real specific to me from where I read this, about the accessory buildings have to match the residence. So, but is this going to make this big barn, if somebody wants to build the big red barn, they're not going to be able to because red doesn't match the house? You know, we're not talking about metal again, we're just talking about structures. And that's, that, there's the specifics in there somewhere where I don't see that being covered. If, it could go back to the, on page eight, about the architectural exteriors having to match the house. You don't want a big red barn, you know, if you have the property. And also, without the height limit, I was a little vague on if the rules are still going to apply about the massing of the animal-keeping structure as far as the setbacks in the view, you know, for the neighbors and whatnot. Are those same rules for a RV structure applied to the animal-keeping structure? So, I just, it's just a little vague, I think, in that area. So, see what you think. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Steve, in regard to Mike's comments on the first one, if somebody was to put an RV or equipment in the, let's say, the breezeway or whatever, so let's go back to the sea biscuit analogy that you're aware of. One, how would we address that? Or would we address it?
We didn't really talk about it in the ad hoc committee. We did back in 2010. I know the sea biscuit analogy came up, and there were members of the planning commission at the time that didn't see a problem with it, provided that eventually, if a future owner wanted to keep animals, it would be available to them for keeping animals. So, I guess I would look at the planning commission, the city council, on some feedback on that. If you, if, in a case-by-case review, if we need to add conditions that say, this building can be used for X, and anything outside of X is a violation of this permit, I don't really know. It's not addressed in what you have before you tonight, that transition of use to something different that doesn't change the original intent of the building.
And maybe we can pull the planning commission and council on that. Personally, I never had any heartburn with that, as long as there wasn't any modifications to the building.
Although, under the rules that are proposed tonight, that is going to be an issue.
Okay.
Because that's why we recorded the conditions, and that's why, one of the things that are required in those is that we go out and inspect and verify that those conditions, meaning the use, is still being performed. I mean, I suppose that you could consider putting something in which says, if you would propose for any period of time, a temporary change in that use, that you'd have to go to the planning commission, have them review the circumstances and approve or deny it. But on the other hand, you may just want to say, sorry, the, your predecessor said it's going to be for animals, it's not going to be for RVs.
So, Mr. Mayor? Because you're polling us.
Go ahead, Phil. Sure.
I have a neighbor, the house existed before we ever moved in, and they've got a breezeway barn with stalls on both sides, and it's got a big tall gable in the middle. And the owner, when we moved in, had no horses in any of those stalls, but had them all out in paddocks. And only when a horse got injured, or they had something going on, maybe foaling, they'd bring them inside. The next owner came in, had no horses, and parked an RV inside. That owner moved away. The current owners have an RV with a trailer behind it that they go horse camping with. They have horses in the paddocks, they have horses in stalls, and they have an RV vehicle with a trailer inside. The use may have been modified briefly, but it didn't stop anybody from thinking of it as an animal-keeping property. I think that was one of the key components of what we were trying to do on the ad hoc committee, was somebody who knows nothing about the property shows up, and a realtor is saying, "I've got this fantastic property for you." When you look at the property, are you going to say, "Oh, that's clearly an animal-keeping property. I can park my trailer here, I can put my horses there," or any manufacturing, you know, any sort of substance associated with that? So, the idea that there's a way to say, for example, a neighbor complains and says, "They're parking their RV in there," but the guy, the owner comes into the, either to the planning department or comes into the city in one form or another and says, "I am, but I still have my animal-keeping, and I have not modified the building. I haven't put other stuff in there. I haven't added a toilet, I haven't got a back room on it, it's just effectively what it was when I moved in," and that that might be okay. I think, I think that's one that we might have to work with. And to Mike's point, it's one that probably will happen more often than it does right now. Because as we go forward, we've got more folks with more different kinds of gear that they want to park in places, and they might want to put it inside the breezeway. Doesn't change the use and ultimately the next buyer, I think, which is really what we were trying to do on the ad hoc committee.
Next speaker, Cheryl?
Well, for me, I'm sorry, just for me, you know, they park a motorhome, and it doesn't bother me at all. It's if they're repairing the motorhome for money. And I think that if it becomes a business, I think that's the problem. But as you, we've all lived here long enough to know, the motorhome gets parked in there, then the mule gets put in there, then somebody moves away, they put horses in there, somebody moves away, they put a bunch of motorcycles in there. As long as you're not repairing the motorcycles for money, what can you say? It's...
Cheryl.
Sue Bacon.
Good evening, Sue.
Good evening.
Good to see you out.
I know. Thank you. Commission and council, I do like the report. I like that it's been tightened up. Again, my concern is always whether we are going to really enforce it. I remember when I came here 14 years ago, the property I bought had no animal-keeping facilities. It, where my barn is now was abandoned in court. Where my round pin was, there were multiple gardens. So, when I invested in a barn, and it was the well-known Barden builder, I was told that my plans would go through in two weeks. Three months later, I finally got my plans through. And the concern back then was, this was 14 years ago, people had come into town and said they were going to be building a barn, and you know they didn't. They built a barn and they made a chop shop. They made a mechanics thing. They had welding. And I said, "I've got horses, I'm doing turnouts, I'm doing a round pin, it's all on the plan." Three months to get my plans approved. Now, I didn't come before the planning commission then, and I didn't come before council then, because I honestly thought my rights as an animal, horse owner, were being protected. I was glad to see that. What I am not glad to see is that the same attention that was paid to my four-stall barn plus tack room and hay storage has not been addressed to the shops that are in town. I've seen and stood before here when accessory owners came in and said, "Yes, I'm going to have welding equipment. Yes, I'm going to have solvents. Yes, I'm going to have a storage of oil." No questions were talked about, you know, about drainage. No questions were asked on where it was going to be stored, or what that might have to do with the groundwater below, if there was any spillage. So again, I'm the horse owner, my sister and brother-in-law have the motorcycles, the RVs, the, all of this, so trust me, I get it, and I have no qualms about racing motorcycles, RVs, whatever you, you know, want to store in these accessory buildings. But I would like to see attention paid as far as review, if you're going to have welding equipment, if you're going to have. And they state it blatantly and straight off, no problem, then we have as tight of regulations that I think I'm seeing here on this ad hoc report paid to all equally, whether it's animal-keeping, whether it's a shop, because that's only fair. And when it comes down to it, what we need to be constantly referring back to is our mission statement. This is a rural atmosphere, instead of reviewing back to Facebook. This is Horsetown USA. We welcome everybody, but we want our animal-keeping respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
This would be a question, Mr. Harper. What she just said, we're talking about being on the planning commission for over six years now, we've never really got into somebody with solvent, or somebody, you know, using an acetylene torch or a TIG welder, which a lot of people do, you know, they tinker. I'm not, you know, because I mean, there's people that I know right now that, you know, have a welder, and they weld little pieces of metal, or build a little barbecue, or, you know, and they use a little bit of solvent because they use paint. So she's bringing up a question. So how would we, how would we be able to address that?
Forget the accessory building question. I mean, because it really is, doesn't have anything to do with accessory building, had to do with residential occupancies. We had the fire chief and the police chief tell us that there were no specific regulations preventing or regulating the use of, you know, acetylene torches, or things which you traditionally buy at a hardware store. I mean, it's just not feasible in the context of animal uses or uses adjacent to other properties, maybe, in looking at what are reasonable conditions for some specific accessory building, that one of the conditions could be because of some uniqueness of the plant life or trees, or, you know, that we could say, no, you can't have acetylene torches, or, but it'd be really depending upon something specific, kind of like with a conditional use, that would be, pertain only to that particular use. And, you know, you do need to treat everybody the same, but only in the sense that you apply the same rules. That as long as you apply the rules, the rules don't have the same consequence for each of the individual properties. So that somebody might, because of their unique circumstances, have to do things differently than one other property. That reevos CUP is the difficult decision.
John.
Bonnie Slager.
Hi. I too would like to say what a great job the ad hoc committee did. I sat through almost all the meetings, and I think they worked very hard and came up with some really good things. Couple of things I wanted to mention, when you were showing the barn, you were showing the hay storage and the tack together, and I don't think most of us keep our tack and our hay in the same area. So I don't know if that was just to show a certain amount of area set aside for that or what, but I have a separate hay area from my tack area. So I would want that in consideration of the size of my barn, I believe. The restroom issue, I understand the concern about somebody living in barns, because as I ride around town, I see a lot of dwellings that shouldn't be. I think it still would be nice to be able to have facility outside of the house, like Berwin says, sometimes it's a long ways. And the fact that you've got to put in a sewer run and everything will probably limit the number of toilet facilities that would be put in in barns, because it makes it pretty expensive. But I'd like to see that option in there for those of us that have three acres, it's a long hike to the house. And when I have friends come over to ride with me, it's nice if they can use a facility without going through my house to use the facilities. So I think you should consider the restroom. As far as inspection and everything, I have seen this with code and with the animal control, is residents always, don't always allow access for these people to inspect. And a part of being able to inspect, obviously, you can't do it if the resident doesn't allow them access, and particularly if you're talking about a year later, seeing if the building is still being used for my mini horses, you know, and it's now a gymnasium or something. The inspector's never allowed on the property. So how are you going to deal with that? Are you going to require that they give an inspector access? They really need to, because I've seen it with my next-door neighbor not allowing animal control on to see her 25 cats, and I'm sure that that's just one example. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
The answer is that one of the conditions of any of the permits is the ability for the city to inspect, to, I mean, it's not a matter of permission. As a condition of you being granted the permit, you've exchanged the right for the city to come in and make sure you're doing what you said you were doing.
Scott Koch.
Hello. I'd like to thank the council and the planning commission staff and the rest of the city staff, especially city staff. They work hard and continually seem to get some negative comments towards them, so thank you guys for your hard work and diligence. And Steve, I know you put a lot of work into this document that you put together. Couple of concerns I had is, this is obviously a pretty big meeting as far as Norco's future is concerned, and we only had notice since Thursday night. It just seems like it was kind of short notice. And then as part of the ad hoc committee, it would have been nice if a community member that was not on the city council or on the planning commission would have been allowed onto that committee, such as maybe an architect or a general contractor. That way they could help with some of the guidelines that were laid out, because I do have concern with some of them, they seem like they're rather cumbersome and hard to follow if you're trying to put a building on your lot. During the discussions of the ad hoc committees, because I attended most of them, Mr. Hoffman actually brought it up earlier, the discussion was a 16-foot eve height. That way you could accommodate a 14-foot roll-up door for your RV and still have the space needed above the roll-up door, which is about two feet, to house that roll-up door. So we needed a 16-foot eve height, because some of the modern RVs are 13 and a half foot. State law allows them to go to 14 foot, and as we all know, over the last 10 years, RVs, trucks, cars, everything has gotten bigger. You know, you look at my truck that's 12 years old, and it can tow half of what a brand-new truck of the equal size can. It's just things have gotten bigger. So I was kind of concerned when I saw that jump from, it was at 16, which was discussed and widely adopted, and then the next meeting, it was dropped down to 14. And when I asked question of that, it was just, this is what it is now that it's on paper. Same thing with the other accessory building, is Steve had it in his slide tonight, that it was a 10-foot eve height, but then in the paperwork, it also says 8 foot. At the meetings, it was discussed 10, and at the meetings, I was actually trying to get that, my voice on that was to go to 12 foot, but then here tonight, it's down to 8 foot. So again, it just seemed... So again, it just seems like what's been transposed from what was discussed over the last several months at these meetings, hasn't come up the same when it gets put down on paper. Things slightly changed. Another area that that happened on was animal keeping area. It was discussed to have a five-foot setback between an animal keeping area and an accessory building that was not an animal keeping structure, but that it was not needed to have that five-foot setback around your property line, such as a wall around the rest of that animal keeping area, if it budded up to your wall. But now in what was shown tonight, it does need that five foot all the way around your animal keeping, including building. So it just, again, that seems like little discrepancies that have happened that when it gets put to paper, changes a little. I don't understand where the, where it comes from, people where they feel that people with accessory buildings are not also pro-animal keeping. It just seems like we're creating an us versus them environment, and that's not necessarily the case. Plenty of people that have accessory buildings have their animal keeping area and tend to use that animal keeping area for what it's for. So it just, it seems like we've created this battle of two different sides of town and it's unnecessary when you can have both. And you can have your cake and eat it too, especially with our large lots. I don't see an issue with that. Another area was the having the proposed thousand-square-foot RV building in your attached workshop area in the L shape that was showed on the slide. During the ad hoc committees, that was discussed at 500 square feet. Now it's 400 square feet. And then with the architectural review board, I'm not exactly sure who's on that, but I believe that's the same people that are part of the planning commission hearing. So I'd like to maybe see that separated because what good is it to have it go to one and then have them bring up the same issues at the planning commission meeting? It just kind of seems, have a fresh set of eyes at it. As far as one of the members that have already spoke tonight, brought up, you know, the issues of having welding equipment and the city attorney even commented that, you know, if it's commercially available or readily available to the public, it's allowed. Even a horseshoe has gas. You know, they have gas bottles, they have forges, they have those type of equipment. It's been deemed safe for 100 years. I have, well personally, I have a welding bottle, or I've had one that I've exchanged before, that is predates World War II, and it's still in circulation today because it's gone through the recertifications to show that it's safe to have. You see them driving down the road on construction trucks, you know, as long as they're properly capped and they follow the laws, there's no issue with it. So it just, I don't, I don't understand where the us versus them dilemma comes in because you can have both. There's nothing that says you can't have an RV building, a workshop, and still have your animal keeping area and enjoy it and have your horses, have your goats, have your pigs, your chickens, all that stuff. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I'll let John answer the one question, but your comment about having an architect or on the ad hoc committee. We do have one, he just graduated, but.
No.
I wish I had his credentials. Would you address the public hearing portion that Scott brought up?
The purpose.
And noticing.
The purpose of the ad hoc committee and this group is study session or receive some input, but ultimately, there's a public hearing before the planning commission and hopefully that some of the things that are raised here that the ad hoc committee didn't think about, but maybe the planning commission thinks should be addressed better, likewise the city council. But there are, will be at least two fully noticed public hearings prior to any action being taken.
Thank you. Cheryl.
Dan Leach.
Hi.
Wait, stay there one second. Berwin, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Sorry about that. I just had one comment about what Scott said about horseshoes and their torches and forges and stuff. If you do it legally, which I think I was the only one in Norco for 30 years that had a business license, there's a section on the business license where you have to list that stuff that you use it, or you're going to use it in your shop if you have a shop out there to shoe horses in. But there is a section on the business license there that you list that you have an acetylene rig or propane forge. You don't have to list, I just carry a little 110 wire feed welder in my truck, but you didn't have to list that, but you, by law, you're supposed to list that stuff on your business license permit.
Dan Leach, sort of from 3300 Crestview. I'm trying to sell my house right now. I'm tired of all the BS that you get up there on the hill, the misappropriations of our fundings, you know, the, every time they, we end up ahead money-wise, the money seems to disappear. I think a couple of years ago, you spent $950,000 on drains when it was explained to the city that they were, the builders tried to put drains in and tried to do things a little bit different and the city bucked it. They didn't want, you know, the builder wanted to put driveways to the street and they did not, the city did not want that, you know. And I was told that that wasn't the truth and I can bring the builder in and they can talk to you about it. I'm trying to buy another house here in Norco that has a building. And again, yeah, bummer, listen to this, nice people. I'm trying to buy a house in Norco that has a building. Almost impossible to find out if it's permitted. The realtor has gone to the city and they said it takes 15 days to find out if there's a permit for that building. That's ridiculous. You know, if I can't buy the one with the building, then I will keep my house. You know, my neighbors were all upset. They all came over yesterday and they said, you know, we don't want you to go. We enjoy you being here. I got all the stuff that's been going on in the neighborhood that you don't hear about because you don't see your neighbors. We were talking about the gas. I work out of a business, Hanson Steel in Santa Fe Springs. They used to be Angela Steel. They've been in business since 1936. We have 100 bottles of oxygen and settling every day. We have had zero issues. I asked the supplier, Mr. Berwin Hannah was, you know, they had that discussion about my son-in-law. I asked the supplier, he has never had an issue with all of the businesses that he supplies. But what he told me was, I told him the story about the school next door, and he said, the school has natural gas. He says, there's thousands of explosions from natural gas. It's something, you know, you're attacking people for stuff that's ridiculous. There's not an issue. It needs to stop. This is a democracy. And out in Norco, there are a lot of people that are very upset about what's going on. You know, this is not, if you have a lot that is able to put a building up and have animal keeping, what is wrong with that? People with horses like to keep stuff nice. It just doesn't seem like you're being fair. You know, the building should be set on the size of your lot. If you have a half acre, you should be allowed to have a 1,200 square foot building. If you have over a half acre, you should be allowed to have a 1,500, whatever. It should be, there should be some kind of normalization. And all lots wouldn't qualify if they weren't flat and if they weren't usable to make it so you can have your animals and safely have your animals there. You know, it just doesn't seem like we were listened to at the ad hoc meetings. I don't feel that we got a fair shake. You know, I would like to see it done in a better way. You know, it, there's a lot of people that have come to me and said, I moved to Norco from Eastvale, from Corona, and the reason they moved here is they love the animals, which we all do. We all love the horses, the zebras, the whatever that are here that we see all the time. We love it. I wish my grandkids would get involved with horses. You know, I have enough room, I have .6 of an acre, I have room for them. The first grandkid, I have 10 grandkids, the first grandkid that wants a horse is going to get a horse. And we're not at war because we want buildings. We want to keep stuff nice. I got a, you know, a nice ski boat. It looks like hell sitting outside. My realtor, she wants to buy a $150,000 horse trailer, and she won't do it until she knows she can put the thing away. In 10 years, it'll look brand-new. If you set it outside, in 10 years, it looks terrible. You know, there's a war going on here and it needs to stop. You know, when you start talking about three inches of a wall, really? Come on. That's crazy. Three inches of the guy's wall? Come on. You know, there's rules, there's qualifications. If we meet those, it should be, it should get approved. This isn't right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to address on that, Steve?
How do I find out if that building is?
What building?
Okay, I'm trying to buy a house.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's, that has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight.
No, it does. You guys have seemed to drop the ball on a lot of stuff and you said that you don't. But what I'm trying to do is find out if there is a permit on the building.
And that would be a freedom of information or a public request to make. That's indicative, that's staff workload, but that's not why we're here tonight to argue that point.
I'll remind you that we're, the state law limits you to discussing things which are on the agenda.
Right.
And this is a study session to talk about this specific ad hoc proposal.
Cheryl.
There are no more cards on this item.
There's, there's one more coming up.
Pass the winner.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission and council. I think we're sitting at a precipice as far as Norco's future is concerned. I've been here 38 years. I remember in 1992, when a well-meaning council, a very dedicated horse people okayed Western Pacific plans that were going to be built behind my home. From 1992 to when they were built in 1999, the plans for those homes changed drastically. I'm out of breath, I'm sorry. From the average home being 2,500 square foot single level on a true half acre, leaving lots of room for animals, it morphed into 400, I'm sorry, 4,000 square foot two-story home on a half acre that was on a two-to-one slope with no animal keeping. We quickly regrouped and figured out, okay, that was wrong, and eventually got three divisions later to a PACA. We have no more buildings really, you know, development space in Norco. We have individual lots that might be built on. Your duty now at this point is to protect the animal keeping properties that we do have, the animal areas that we do have. And if it's in an odd space that doesn't have an official PACA, if we let accessory buildings or barns or whatever go up and take the animal keeping area, as Mrs. Dixon said when she opened up, we'll wind up as Orange Park Acres and Yarbelinda and Fullerton Orange, all of them. So we're at that point where everything has to be done to protect the animal keeping area that we do have left in town. And it's wonderful that people that want the accessory buildings have animals and they love them, and I don't want it to be a war. And I personally did not attend any ad hoc meetings. I was a half an hour late, so I didn't see the presentation. But just to remind you, from this point forward, Norco, what's left of the animal keeping has to be protected, whatever it takes. And I love the fact that I think evidently you've got a good list to work from and it's just going to be careful enforcement. I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Zilgit.
Hi, John.
John Zilgit from 2364 Del Mar. And this is a new subject for me, actually brand-new. I came to City Hall today to find out, hey, I would like to build a barn or garage in my backyard. I want to learn about it. And said, well, you better come to the meeting tonight. And something that was discussed tonight that is confusing me, and I'd like to hear it discussed when I sit down, is the siding or what the building needs to be made out of. I understand the desire to keep the animal keeping and maybe eliminate the eyesore of metal buildings, but I've heard it said multiple times tonight that whatever, if it's an accessory building, it needs to be the same material as the house. That seems counterproductive to your Western theme to have a stucco-sided garage when it could be a wood-sided barn that. And this gentleman here brought up the subject earlier, but he brought up two subjects and that one wasn't discussed. And so I'd like to hear some discussion on that and where that goes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask Phil to weigh in on that. We did discuss this in our ad hoc committee. It's not, not doing away with pre-engineered steel, but that the exterior, on the accessory buildings, the exterior finish would be the same as your house, whether, if your house is wood, stucco, brick, whatever. But I'd like Phil to weigh in on that discussion.
Maybe Steve can make a clarification.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm hoping this is the point of confusion. When we talked about the large vehicle storage and when we talked about the non-animal keeping accessory building, we talked about its exterior material matching the build, the primary residence. There was some discussion about the roof, and I don't really recall where we ended on that one, but we had some discussion about the roof, but the, I mean, the roof and the roof material. But my understanding was that we left it that the animal structure would be traditional animal structure material. So it might have a metal insulated panel on the outside because of its massing. It didn't pose a problem. It might be a wood, you know, TNG barn, depending on what the normal, the stuff we're used to seeing, MD, Silverado, whoever's building a barn.
Castle Brook.
Castle Brook. The folks that you would see, if you go to Echo One Affair this weekend, you'll see all of them there and they have traditional materials on it. And we said, yes, that's okay on an animal keeping enclosure. But in the case of an RV or a large vehicle storage building and given its massing, or a smaller workshop building and given its representative side, size, that they would match in exterior material, not construction. So you can make the building out of metal, just the exterior siding would match what's going on at the house. So as Mr. Koch pointed out at the time, if you've got brick on your house and you want to have brick on your accessory building, you can. If you've got stucco on your house and you want stucco on your accessory building, you can. But if you've got stucco on your house and you want metal on your building, that's probably not going to be acceptable.
Right.
And if that sounds right to the rest of the ad hoc committee, I think that's where we left it.
I think so.
If it's not represented in the documentation, it probably should come up.
You can have a red barn.
Exactly. So if you wanted to have a red barn, you could have a red barn.
Or a metal pole barn.
Or, yeah. And so if, if that's not clear in the discussion we just had, when this comes before the planning commission, we should probably make sure that that's a very clear point because that's the second time it's come up tonight. And it's a very good point.
And we did leave it with discussions, if you were going with like pre-engineered steel, that you could do a steel roof, a metal panel roof on that. And I did share this with Steve and he can share it with the planning commission at the time, that if you wanted to, and I didn't have any thought either way, if your house had like a clay tile roof, they make a metal panel that is, that looks like a clay tile.
Right.
So in steel. So I mean, we didn't take it that far in the ad hoc committee, but we were, metal paneling was acceptable.
Those issues will come up in the architectural review.
Correct.
Right. The architectural review, all it does is require that you look at what the proposal is. I mean, the architectural review, all it does is require that you look at what the proposal is and make, and make a discretionary decision about, yes, that adequately matches the house, with the exception of barns.
So I want to just address something. In terms of the, let's just take the welding, for example. Say, on the application, somebody says they're not going to weld. Per municipal code, they're finished. Now, the question is, if there's no impact study, because, you know, you go to her high school, and there's all the, the way they protect welding is incredible. So wouldn't the impact study then go back, instead of saying, oh, nobody's going to get hurt from welding? Eh, don't worry about it. Wouldn't it be better, though, if staff said, hey, you're next to a school, what can you do to ensure the safety of the kids who might watch the welding? I'm going to tell you right now, a lot of people burn their eyes on welding. So rather than, you know, just say, oh, it's totally safe, how do we, how do we mitigate those impacts to make sure we protect the neighbors? I mean, that's really, nobody's trying to stop anybody from welding. It's just that if you happen to be in a certain situation, and then what do you do? If you find that a, now, I understand that that was mitigated here, but the point is, on the application, it said it wasn't going to happen. But the real point is, you have to do, you have to figure out a way to go, okay, you're going to do this in this special building. How do you help your neighbors? Also, too, half-acre, I think it's, I wouldn't have a problem with a 1,200 square-foot building. But that isn't what we're talking about. We're talking about 2,000 square-foot building on a half-acre. So I just think that, that a lot of things have to happen at the front desk to sort of mitigate a lot of this stuff. And, you know, the other thing that Pat talked about, and we don't talk about the intent and purposes of our municipal code. And this is where everything is. It is hereby found and declared that the city of Norco lies in a natural setting of rural scenic and historic beauty. That this rural environment generates a strong characteristic for development in Norco's new equestrian focal point in Southern California. And it goes on about a unique environment. It goes on about all these things. I'm not trying to bust anybody's chops. It's just, I mean, sitting over there, she was on the first committee to make the rules for the city 50 years ago. And I know that doesn't mean something to people, but she's right. If we don't protect ourselves and, and take the time, we will lose this lifestyle. And so I think that, I think, you know what? You know where we're at, is if people really feel this way, we need to change the intent and purposes. We need to change our mission statement. We need to change our, our, just about every, everything we talk about, our charter, our strategic plan, just get rid of it. Or we need to do everything we can to a force end and use that as the barometer for what we're trying to do. And, you know, where cities fall is not from the outside. It's from the inside. Orange Park Acres, perfect example. What happened is, they didn't, they didn't realize what was happening, and pretty soon it became, you know, metal-building central. And then they began to downsize the lots. One of the blessings of Norco, I mean, you know, Mr. Koch, I don't know if this building's going to be a problem or not. My problem was the process. But on my side of town, what do you do eventually when you don't have animals on the properties, and they begin to break them up? That's what councils do. I mean, I'm convinced that they're going to look at, no offense, but they're going to look at other cities, and they're going to go, you people were out of your minds building all these homes. We are a sea of green in the middle of concrete. And, you know, Mr. Koch, you actually, you actually, I was listening to you. You fought to get back here. You fought to get back to a place where Berwin, me, him, Greg, we fought. We have fought to keep it something special. And so it's not personal. It's not personal to you either, Mr. Leach. But it's, we're trying to protect something that is really rare, it can go like that. So thank you for indulging me.
Cheryl?
No more cards.
Thank you. We do have to give staff a direction. That's our recommended action. How would you like to break that up? Andy, I mean, with planning, you want planning to make a recommendation, or do you want council?
Yes, before we go to that point, there are certain items that have come up that... Yeah, before we go to that, there are certain items that have come up that I don't think we have resolutions on.
All right.
I'd like to start with those, first of all. We do understand that as part of this, staff needs to come up with a checklist of implementing guidelines. Okay? We've talked about inspection of accessory buildings, but we did not reach a resolution with respect to whether that is going to be an annual inspection or how frequent that needs to be. At this point, based on the recommendation that is before you, there is no recommendation to have the architectural review board continue. I, that's at least the way I'm looking at the recommendations. I don't know that, what process that would take if, if we were to continue with that process. The recommendation before you also eliminates the CUP process. It does also eliminate the part of the site, site plan review, which is part of the CUP process. There is also some recommendation with respect to whether we allow washrooms with respect to animal-keeping shelters. That issue has not been resolved. And finally, I think we need to make a clarification with respect to exterior, exterior and wall finishes for animal shelters, to make sure that those does not, there is no requirement that they match the exterior finishes and wall finishes of the primary residence.
Okay. One of the difficulties tonight is that, remember, this is a study session. You're not making decisions. And so maybe the most appropriate way of addressing those is because all that's going to happen, the, the ad hoc committee's already voted that their proposal, as written, is going to go to the planning commission. So those unresolved issues probably just need to be questions asked when it gets to the public hearing at the planning commission.
I'm not very comfortable with that.
No.
When we, when our party's here, I'd like to get some direction from what the wish of the city council and the planning commission is, in that way we can frame the recommendations when it comes to the planning commission.
I think we, we could do some of these this way. Let me start with the easy one that I think we did address with the ad hoc committee, and that was the finishes on the barn, the exterior sheeting. I think we were pretty clear on that, that whether it, like in a manufactured barn, that would be like, like a sandwich panel, it didn't have to match.
Right. We agree with that.
Right.
Just, but that's, that's the position of everyone.
Well, we can just go down the line. Phil, you start, barn finishes.
I think, I think what we just stated earlier is exactly the case of what the ad hoc committee recommended, and that's what we'd put forward.
Danny?
That the, that in fact, it doesn't have to adhere to the same guidelines as the other accessory buildings.
Danny?
It's on. I'd like to see a study just with us. And I think it can be done. It doesn't legally, you don't have to have a public hearing on it, that we can have a study session with the city council. Right? We can?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you can have a study session with the city council on any subject. And, I mean, it's notice and public.
I can't hear you.
I think it's referring to a joint planning commission and city council meeting to approve public hearing, as opposed to study session.
A, a single public hearing?
You have to have a public hearing with it?
Yeah.
Or just a study session with, just a study session with, with, planning, with the city council?
I'm not sure. I'm, I'll, I'll answer some question. Maybe it'll be the one you asked.
Can we have a study session with the planning and that, without a public hearing? A closed session?
No.
You cannot?
No.
Can?
At least that one was easy.
Can I ask a question? So you've said that the, what the ad hoc committee has proposed is what is going forward to planning and to council.
Right.
Some issues for clarification, or maybe revisions, have been brought up. What is the appropriate process for that to take place?
The appropriate process, I mean, we've heard comments tonight. So the appropriate process, I think, is when with the schedule, with the planning commission schedules their public hearing, that those items will be addressed, and the planning commission will make modifications to, if they're necessary, to the ad hoc committee's report before, and ordinance, before they refer the ordinance to you.
Okay, so planning commission can make amendments to that. Okay.
Yeah.
Question?
The only thing that's in stone now, unfortunately, because of how the processes work, is the ad hoc committee's recommendation, because it was adopted and it's forwarded, and it's not going to be changed. But it can be changed, but by the planning commission. And in turn, the planning commission recommendation will be changed by the city council.
I have a question real quick. Could, the questions that Mr. Kuro has brought in, could that be emailed to the ad hoc committee where they could make?
No. I mean, the only way of doing that is to call another meeting of the ad hoc committee to address those, if you want to do that. That's...
My comment is exactly what John said. I felt this was discussion. We have a lot, had had a lot of input. We already did make our recommendations from the ad hoc. It should go to the planning commission to discuss it again with the public, make our changes and/or recommendations to the city council. Then it's up to them. Then the ball's in their court. But anything else at this point doesn't seem like it fits and is right to do.
And I think what Andy or Steve will reflect in the staff report to the planning commission will be kind of the consensus comments that came out here.
Correct. So we can take that.
So I'm, some of the things you said, though, I don't think that's what we talked about. I mean, all of a sudden, there's no site plan review, there's, will you look at the application? Will you look at all the questions that we asked? Is that still, you know, I mean, obviously, the architectural review, you need to find something that's applicable. I don't think we want to lose that. I actually kind of like the suggestion that maybe, but I don't know how that works to have, I mean, how do you tell Phil Giuffarian not to be on the architectural review? I mean, you know. But, that said, it may, the problem is, is I don't truthfully think that maybe people would like the fact that outsider person would do it, because if they just follow these guidelines, there's 30 to 40 of these buildings that would never have been built. They wouldn't have been built. And so, but I don't want to lose that. And I don't want to lose, I want to make sure the application is such that, you know, it's, it does its job. How do we ensure, I mean, will that be discussed at your level? No, I mean, when it goes before you, the, the stuff that we talked to him about, will that be discussed?
We're going to discuss all of this, as far as I'm concerned, because we'll have it in our, in our paperwork. I mean, that's the next goal.
Yeah. I mean, I would think that the questions that, or the concerns that Mr. Kuro has, he would put that together. Steve would put together the rest of it, and then it would come, I would think would come to us, and then we can address all those questions. And if it took one meeting, or whatever meetings to go, then it would, we'd make our recommendations, and then it would go to you for your, you know, final blessing, or to make changes on it.
But you were just clarifying generally, is, okay, gotcha.
And the, the thing from my point of view that I don't want to appear happening is that the city council and planning commission have met and made decisions on what it should say without having conducted the two public hearings.
The only thing I'd like to address real quick is, I know Robbins made it before, up here on city councils, a gentleman said that he just got notified on Thursday. Steve, what is the normal procedure on something like that? So, because, you know, if he's saying Thursday, that doesn't...
The, well, I'd turn it over to the city clerk, but this was not a notice public hearing. No notices were sent out. It was only published in the newspaper and posted at our notice, public notice sites.
Yeah, the agenda requires a 72-hour notice. We go beyond that. We published the Thursday before. Well, this was Monday, but typically, like, for a Wednesday meeting, we publish well in advance. And that is on our website, through eBlast. We advertise quite a bit.
Thanks, Cheryl. Ted?
Mayor?
Comments?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to get back. I mean, we're just looking, like what Andy said, we're trying to get this done, and he had some areas, the six areas that you needed to think. I think as a, since this is a study session, I think we can get a consensus without, among the members, what direction, that way when planning does meet, they know where we, as a consensus, have on each one of these areas. And that's why I think just a consensus is what we came, based upon the ad hoc committee. I don't want to sit here and beat a dead horse. We've gone through this with the ad hoc committee. We met, and we discussed these things, and he still has some answers. And I think this, it's going to go to the planning commission, so I'd like to address all of Andy's concerns at that, those directions at this time. Thank you.
Well, then, let's, is that acceptable to do, John?
You could, you could certainly make, I mean, that's what we're doing here. It's a study session. So you're certain, certainly as individual council members and planning commissioners can make comments about what your views are on...
All right, so Andy's first concern was on the checklist. Berwin? Any comments, concerns, discussion?
Yeah, I got another question, but I'll answer that about the checklist. I think that we need to keep it up, make sure that everything that's, is on that checklist is done before they get written off on their permit and everything, because like the measuring and stuff like that, it gets off, so the checklist can get off, and you could wind up with a four-stall gymnasium instead of a horse barn somewhere, you know. But...
Robin?
Question I had, if you'll allow me to answer.
Absolutely.
Tried to when Phil got through. But just talking about accessory building has to be the same material as the house. Like, if it's a stucco house, you'd have to have a stucco...
The exterior finish, that was the ad hoc's recommendation?
Are we getting into homeowners association-type ruling there? It sounds to me like we are. Because I think everybody that ever has a hobby, and I got two of them besides my animals, is one of them is I have a lot of good woodworking equipment, and I've got a welder, and I've always welded. I carried, like I said, I carried it in my shoe-in truck. But at Christmas time, I get out there, I like to get out there and build little horseshoe toys and whatever like that. Now, I ain't going to do that in a stucco building. And I ain't going to do it outside when it's raining. To me, a workshop is a metal building. And they make, they make a lot of nice, they make a lot of nice colored metal. So I, I see that if you go to go put restrictions on your, somebody's accessory building or workshop, whatever it is out there, you're getting into a homeowners association-type deal, and that's dictating to people what they're going to have to do. And I got a big problem with that.
I'll give you what I would say would be my counter-argument to that. And that would be that you can certainly do your structure in, in steel. Okay? In pre-engineered steel. The, the trend has changed that metal panels, metal buildings are now, they're ugly. Okay? And you're going to find that in most jurisdictions, you have to do your sidewall material, other, in material other than metal panels, which is certainly possible to do. So I think part of the thing that we were coming with, with the ad hoc committee is to get rid of the big accessory buildings with the metal panels, okay? And have it aesthetically look more like the house. But your structure, it doesn't change that construction. You can still do it in, in steel.
But you're, you're talking about the, the huge accessory buildings, stuff like that.
Right.
I'm talking about a smaller version. We have a, what, 840-something?
Eight, the, the 864?
That is not that big. You know, you probably wouldn't have over eight-foot walls on it.
Right.
So why couldn't a person have a total metal building that was about 800-and-something square feet instead of going to stucco? Because I don't, I don't see too many people getting inside of a building with the stucco and wood and that, running a cutting torch and a welder and everything.
You can...
Well, the fire marshal first would probably have a big problem with that. Well, the fire marshal first would probably have a big problem with that.
But it would be, and I guess this is one of the reasons to keep the architectural review, you can get a steel panel that looks like stucco.
It's steel, though, you're not.
Absolutely.
Okay, as long as you're not making somebody.
Or you can go, you can go brick, block, concrete, tilt.
As long as you're not making somebody working something that's unsafe, you know, besides that, I think it'd be ugly anyway if it's stucco, but, uh, that's my opinion.
Well.
Yeah, I think that the direction of the ad hoc committee was simply a facia.
Basically. Phil, you can always jump in, you're the architect of the.
I don't know, you're doing a pretty good job right there. Now, the reality is, I think, you know, if, if in a case like yours where when you were talking about, you know, you really expect that you're gonna be doing some stuff out there, welding, grinding, I mean, I'll tell you, I got a grinder in my garage, my garage isn't made of metal, right? That's just the garage is attached to my house, but I'm not welding, I'm not doing it on a routine basis. If I was a guy who was welding and doing it on a routine basis, and I wanted to build an accessory building for doing my hobbies, I might build it out of block and cover it in stucco. I might build it out of steel and put a stucco on the outside. If the point was, you gotta make it so that it looks like it's part of the neighborhood, I mean, generally, the kind of things that we were talking about, when we were talking about the smaller scale workshops, those, it's gonna be a whole bunch of stuff, woodworking, automotive, everything you'd imagine, normal household stuff, stuff you probably mostly buy commercially, you go to tractor, tractor supply and go get it and bring it back, right? It's not, we're not talking about exotic equipment and lifts and all that, but the space, the responsibility of the individual to make the space safe is a little different than what it should look like to the rest of the neighborhood. And all we really wanted to say was, what should it look like to make it not look like it was a commercial building? And that was really it. That really was just so, it didn't, the next guy who showed up at the house didn't think that's where I'm gonna run my automotive business out of. That was really all it was.
Right, well, I wasn't talking about the messy buildings and over in my neighborhood, nothing matches anyway, so, made no difference.
Comments on the checklist?
So back to the checklist.
Or any of these other items that Andy had a concern on?
Guidelines, I would just ask that staff comes up with a pretty clear and concise step-by-step of what they're gonna do to ensure that the process is enforced.
Coven?
I'm going through on the site plan review, definitely need that, and that should be done. The ARC, we need, definitely need that to continue. The inspection, it should be an annual inspection, because if not, we're gonna, things will fall through the cracks. As far as losing the CUP, if we put the conditions on that we have talked about in the ad hoc committee on approval, I don't think, well, let's get away from the CUP, it belongs in commercial zones, does not belong in residential, as far as I'm concerned. There'd be conditions in the, in the approval. As far as the washroom and the bathroom and the horse thing, basically, that could be one of those conditions that would state that shall not be utilized as a living quarters in a stable, if we want to put a restroom out in the barn area. But as one of the conditions, if we want to have one out there, then we have to put it as a condition, and I'm along with Bill and Greg, I mean, Phil and Greg, as far as the animal sighting, if, we don't want it on the barns, it's fine, we keep those pre-made barns, but the accessory buildings, they come up with some wazoo stuff now for sighting, you don't even know it's metal, so, that's, I'll go through my checklist.
Bob? Your group.
Phil? Thank you. The, the only, I'm gonna go ahead and hit them all like Ted, but, on the checklist of items, I think the only thing really that's critical is that we make sure that they get updated over time. They probably need to be refreshed as we discover. One of the key things we learned from the 2010 versus 2017 is things change, people have different attitudes, but we also have technology changing, things change. So we just want to make sure that whatever the format is, it's got an ability to be updated over time, and whether or not that comes back before commission, before it goes to council, however that happens, we just want to make sure it gets updated. I think on the inspection timing, I was sort of, I was sort of torn on it, I think it's a minimum of annual, but it might be, we might need to put in a, or as required by the, by code enforcement, if there, if we found that there was a problem, but that might be the case, that it's always that way anyway.
Pretty straight.
Okay. Architectural review, I did like Berwin's point that within the architectural review, we ought to probably consider whether it's a safe use, right? Because we don't really always know what they're gonna do, but somebody has a specialty hobby, we probably want to make sure it's a safe use. I like the idea of removing the CUP process, because I think we're using the wrong one. The washrooms and the animal keeping, I like the suggestion that if we do it and we put in the conditions, a washroom is permissible in the case that there are no living quarters, so that, under the case of inspection, if they determine somebody was living there, that'd be a reason to either take it apart or whatever it was necessary. But I, we have plenty of friends that have, you know, not necessarily in Norco, but who have a restroom in the barn, and it's really nice when you're all geared up to not have to take off all your gear to go into the house, so you don't mess up the house, right? And then the exterior finishes, I think we already discussed.
Danny?
I think, I like everything that's been proposed, and the checklist is a good idea. I go back, all the way back to 2010, I was really involved, I'm the one that had all the pictures of the metal buildings, and on the weekends going over, driving by and to see what they're used for. So all this that we're doing tonight, 2010, but when you drive out there and you see what the buildings are really being used for, they were tremendously being used for With all this, I think the city council needs to really get our code enforcement step up. Since we're doing this, I think another point is to protect what we're, planning commission, you guys are approving, we need a little bit more help. We can do all this just like in 2010, but what they're using the facilities for is another story. I think the ad hoc, the ad hoc committee did a real great job. The check office I liked the best, that wasn't presented that way back in 2010, and I think this time, I think you did a great job doing it that way. And everything you've done, I'd be just reverting, everything that you've said and added to it is true. Just more things had to be clarified and for us to look at it again, too. Thank you, guys.
Pat?
I agree with Phil, everything he said, except I would like to defend 2010, I was heavily involved in that, too. And 2010 came up because there weren't, didn't seem to be any regulations and rules at all. People built whatever they wanted to, called it a barn, and we had giant buildings all over the place, so that was the beginning. You learn as you go along, you learn what works, what doesn't work. Now we're back seven years later, I think fine-tuning it, but we're still using basically what we're looking at. And yes, some things got through that weren't supposed to or didn't, but we still didn't get what we had before we even started, so I don't like to put down 2010, because I think we really, it was a step in the right direction, now we're moving farther. I agree with the checklist, I agree with everything else that Phil said, so I'm looking forward to having it come to the planning commission.
I agree with all the planning commissioners and city council. The only thing I'd like to bring up, and it's just, what I see is, you know, we do have some of these properties that already have a barn, and let's say they want to put a 800 or a 900 square foot little workshop in the back. A lot of, a lot of people have six-car garages or five-car garage, and that's where they tinker. Well, I don't see why we can't put a toilet and a sink in there. I mean, most cities allow it, I just don't know why we couldn't, couldn't do that, because I think, I think it'd be something that could be possible. Other than that, I agree with everything that's said, I think we should be annual. It does need, the ARC needs to stay, and I'm gonna go from there.
Andy, does that address some of your concerns on your six, seven items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like us now to provide a direction to staff? And would you like that to come from council? Or from council and planning?
Both.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, based on the joint study session and what we discussed tonight and the recommendations of the ad hoc committee, that this item moves forward to the planning commission for a public hearing and further discussion.
I'll second that.
Commission members, Jafarian?
Yes.
Edges?
Yes.
Azavito?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Council members Bash, Hannah, Grunmeyer, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you all for your time and your participation. We're adjourned.